Like to call this meeting to order. Marty, you're on.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To a people who stands on a nation, under God, indivisible, with every reason and justice for all.
Normally at this time, Carmen asks for a moment of side silence for our first responders and those who have given their all to our safety. He's on his way back from North Carolina with his bees, so I will ask for that moment of silence. The board met an executive, first of all, this meeting is being livestreamed. The board met an executive session for personnel matter prior to tonight's meeting. April 2019 is Pennsylvania's Safe Digging Month. Call 811 at least three business days in advance of any excavation project in order to prevent damage to underground utilities and/or personal injury to the person doing the excavation.
Can I ask you a question? In that material that we got, it says in there that the utilities may respond. I thought the utilities had to respond.
They have three days to respond and mark it out.
Well, the word alert reads as says "may," means they may or may not.
So like the cable companies don't always respond, for example, because they deem it more cost-effective to not respond.
Or that the Pico's or a work company.
That's, then they're damaging their own infrastructure, which would be...
But they have recently sorted, they've changed the penalty system and now they are finding people where you're not responding or not calling. But for the average homebody view, if you're planting a tree in your front yard and you dig through the power line to your house, you're dead. You could be dead. But it's just, and...
No, I understand.
It's very important for people, if they're gonna be digging, if you replace your mailbox, and you should call. Because in the street, there's things like gas lines and big utility lines.
I understand what you're saying. The question isn't so much that, as it is if the residents call, can they expect that the utilities will show up?
Yes, utilities are required to come out and either mark it or provide you, or else tell you that there is no conflict.
So here, the utility companies will mark.
Yeah, but if they don't, if there is no conflict, then they'll contact you back and say, "We do not have a conflict."
Although I had an experience where we called, actually Xfinity called, and they came out and did the work, and after they left, Pigo came out and marked our yard. After the work was done.
Yeah, Marty, you were reading, in some cases, the utility company may not mark the service lines you own.
Right, they won't, right, they won't mark it's your private stuff.
From your curb to your house.
That's your responsibility.
That's what I...
Anyway, the bottom line, April Safe Digging Month, if you want to dig a hole, call 811. They go through the process. It could save your life.
Okay. Next is something very important. April 13th, 2019 is Keep East Goshen Beautiful Day. This is a project of our Conservancy Board, and we have lots of volunteers, hopefully, who will come and help clean up our roads and make us, make the township beautiful in preparation for the spring and summer, when we all tend to be out more. What to do? If you're interested, come to the Township Building on Saturday, April 13th, between 8:00 and 9:00 a.m. to register. There will be refreshments and supplies, gloves, trash bags, vests, whatever's needed. If April 13th does not work, you can contact the township and give them a different date if you have a group that can, can help but can't do it on that specific day. And, but if you are gonna do that, let them know what day you're going to do the cleanup, so that when they do, when they make their assignments on Saturday, they won't include that stretch in their, in their project. And also, they need to let Public Works know where to pick up the trash and when. So, it's a good project, it's worthwhile. If anybody's interested, please give the township a call.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on that a little bit. It's, it's one of my passions, I'd like to be some of your passions and some of your neighbors. The roads right now in East Goshen are not looking really good. 352 is an eyesore, and that's one that I know I'm gonna do. I know I'll take a little bit of risk doing it.
How am I gonna talk about that? Don't take the risk.
Well, I'm gonna get up very early on a Saturday. But, but at any rate, our roads deserve better. We can't, we cannot control the, the individuals who just choose to litter, but we can choose to make our place better, and it is, it says a lot about the quality of our life, how our roads look. And I think some of the roads look disgraceful, and I think we, as a citizenry, can do better. So if you have a chance to volunteer, I'm amazed of litter I see in subdivisions that sit in front of people's homes. I, I don't get it, but I'm very passionate about it, and I think it's an easy thing to do. So if you can share with your neighbors, you have an interest, you have the ability for an hour or two, it can make a difference.
Mike and I share that frustration, and I have a question for the board that just occurred to me while I was driving around, and I didn't, and as a rookie, I'm gonna ask this question. Can we, as a board, increase the litter fine in our township to like $1,000 and post signs on the highways that litter, littering $1,000?
We're statutory limited to the...
That's my question.
With the R.
That's my question.
And you really have to catch them in the act, and it's almost the police officer has to be there to see it. I mean, it's a, it's a very difficult one to force. And obviously, you don't gauge somebody if they litter, I mean, not in today's world. It's just one of those things, but really important for our place. We, we live in a special township, and our roads, and we deserve better. And unfortunately, it takes our labor to pick up other people's trash.
I, I think I mentioned to Rick what you're talking about on 352. When that windstorm came by a couple of weeks ago, for some reason, the way it was, the way it worked, it blew a fair amount of trash into the curve opposite Brookmont up in the northern end of the township. And I would ask Rick to assign somebody to do it, maybe even our people with the Public Works truck behind them. Because there's no way that any human being should do that by themselves. And I appreciate Mike volunteering, but it's too doggone dangerous, because you can't see the cars, they can't see you, and there's no hill to go up to get out of the way if somebody starts coming around the curve. So if Ricky could make a rain for somebody to do it up there, that would be great.
We will have, the Zestie come out after cleanup day. If it doesn't get cleaned up, we'll have the Zestie come out.
Okay.
Phone number, please.
I, we're gonna do King Road down to the, to Green Hill. My neighborhood group is gonna get together, and we got permission to access 352 on our side through backyards and the residents. We just call the residents, secondly, come through your yard. That way, we don't have to go out on the road.
Excellent.
Just an idea.
Okay. Next, is there any public comment on non-agenda issues?
Please come up. Anybody.
Okay. There are no emergency services reports for this meeting. There's no financial report, so we'll go for approval of the minutes and treasurer's report. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I got a question in one set of minutes, John. I forget where it is, hopefully find my, find my thing quickly. Talked about, the letter that read, the individual that read the letter, I guess it was about their dissatisfaction with, if that letter was pinpointed to not only the zoning hearing board, but also the township. So in that sentence, you've gotta, you've gotta...
Well, you read, right now, it reads, Ms. Relick read a statement critical of the manner in which the zoning hearing board hearing on Mallory Institute's application was handled, which broadly includes how the zoning hearing board conducted itself, as well as the board supervisors, I would think.
Okay. If you, you can read it that way, I didn't read it that way.
But I could have...
I was...
Critical in the manner which the board and the zoning hearing board handled the Mallory Institute application.
Correct. I think, her, her reading of it was both.
Okay.
And the problem is, I'm, I'm not sure what the purpose of it was to express their dissatisfaction. They didn't really outline their dissatisfaction or know what should be done about it. I, I, I got out of that letter, I happen to live down there, so I know the people involved. But it would have been nice to know what they would like to have done differently, because the letter was a letter of complaint, but as far as I recall, there wasn't anything in there about what they didn't like. So, and we didn't pursue it, because it was just a public commentary. But at the same time, I'm saying to myself, if you wanna do that, which is fine, at least tell us what the hell you're complaining about, because it doesn't make any sense to complain if you don't have an, some illustration of what the complaint represents.
Well, it was public comment, and we don't always have to respond by back to public comments. So we leave, let it, that's what we did.
For purpose of the minutes, I think we got it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just an editorial comment.
Is, is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I'll, I'll move.
Second?
I seconded without addition.
Any other comments? Any comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, treasurer's report.
I don't have any particular comments. Does anybody else have comments? If not, I'll make a motion.
These are on the bills, pay, resist the pressure.
You may.
One question was unanswered about the expense on the neighboring property or else we had to clean up, and that's, that's a great possible outcome there for reimbursement.
I, I did have a question. I had a question on batch four of 5A, page four, under general fund. Top expenditure...
Michael Patterson?
Patterson.
Yeah, so there was some, there was some, there was some, was a, some tree limbs from a township, a tree, a township, a tree, right, in open space. It broke, it broke through a fence, and it broke the pool cover on a, on a pool. We, you know, went back and forth, decided we'd just repair it in-house rather than...
That's, that's, okay. So it was from a tree within our jurisdiction? Okay, thanks. That's all I got.
I take it, John, that given it's on here, it's not recoverable from our insurance company?
In, in, I'm trying to remember, because this was a couple of months ago. I think that this, I think, I think we still have an open claim that we didn't file any claims against. Yeah, I, at this point, it's not, it's not recoverable.
But I think as a policy, anytime we have a claim that exceeds an amount, whether it's $500 or something like that, we should put our insurance company, make them aware of it in the event that it turns into something more...
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I think we may have cut down the tree before, I, yeah, there was some hiccup. I can't remember the details, because it was a while ago.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
You made a motion.
I did make a, yes.
Any further discussion? Any from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion is carried.
Just as a public service announcement, if you heat your home with home fuel oil and you have an oil tank in your basement or outside your home, your insurance, your homeowner's insurance policy generally will not cover a leak from that tank that, and we have a situation where those cleanups can cost anywhere from $25,000 to $100,000. So, in this case, the oil leaked into township property. So a couple of ways to handle that. One is to put rider on your homeowner's insurance to cover. It's specifically written for that event. So if you're using fuel oil, and you have an oil tank, make a recommendation that you talk to your insurance broker and add that rider on the policy to avoid that situation.
Yeah, this one, in fact, this, this one we're referring to, which we're, appears we're gonna be reimbursed from the insurance company of the property owner, the amount is over $35,000. And also, you should know that if by chance your oil tank is in your home, in your basement, and it leaks, the, the company that comes to repair it or typically replace it, they automatically have to notify the DEP that there's a spill, and it, it, the cost goes up right off the bat. So instead of spending a couple of thousand dollars to replace a tank, you could be looking at a good bit more. So if you have backup, or it's your primary source of heat, or that's your backup source of heat, after 25 or so years, it's probably worth nothing else than prophylacticant or replaced.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to new business. John, would you take a...
I will take, yes, happily. So the, as you remember, I think a month or two ago, we talked about, we talked about the, well, just to back all the way up for the benefit of those in the audience. So in the, in the 2015 comp plan, there was a recommendation to, to, for the, to consider amendments, the zoning ordinance to allow for incubator uses.
No, we're not there yet.
Oh.
Concise statement, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm so excited. Yeah, so we, we received a concise financial statement back from our CPA firm, which shows basically a positive change in fund balance for the year. I'm sorry, Jenny.
That's okay, I'm sorry, my fault.
Actually, and technically, a negative change across all funds and fund balance of $615,000. But the reason for that is just we're drawing down on the proceeds of the 2017 bond fund, so that's, that's all explained by that. And this was published in the Daily Local News. In the next month or so, we will have our full financial statement that will be posted on the website and disseminated to all interested parties.
Are there any comments?
No.
From the board, any comments from the audience? Thank you so much, John. Okay. Now we're going to, we are trying to draft amendments to our zoning ordinance to allow for business incubators. And the Planning Commission has been working on this. It was submitted to the Chester County Planning Commission, and they have come back with comments. And now I will give it to John, who has written a memo considering those recommendations and how we are going to respond to them.
Yeah, so as I was alluding to before, in 2015, the comp plan recommended the township consider amendments to zoning ordinance to allow for business incubator uses. Currently, the zoning ordinance does allow for multiple uses in a multiple-use building, of which there are, you know, a handful in the township. But the zoning ordinance, which was, you know, written decades ago, doesn't allow for, requires that each of those uses have at least 5,000 square feet of floor space. So when you're thinking about a small business incubator, a startup with three or four or five people, you know, working close together, you certainly don't need 5,000 square feet. So this is a way of modernizing the zoning ordinance to recognize the way in which people work in 2019, and to also encourage a kind of entrepreneurial environment within our business park districts. So we send the original draft to the County Planning Commission. They had six comments. I won't go through all of them in detail, but the memos are the outlines what they are and what our recommendations are. And the, the bottom line is, is that of those six comments, I thought, we thought only really two, I think, were justified in making a change to the zoning ordinance. They wanted to have more flexibility about parking, more flexibility about signage, and we didn't feel comfortable with that. We felt that requirements prevent the property from being overcrowded. We felt the signage requirements are perfectly adequate. It's good enough for CTDI and Johnson &amp; Johnson. It's good enough for a business incubator as well. So it was just those sort of two changes, you know, and really small changes about uses and adding services, anticipated future uses and services for when an applicant comes in with a conditional use application, and also amending the definition of light industry to take out the clause and other objectionable outdoor nuisances from that definition. So basically, this is on the agenda for tomorrow night's Planning Commission as well. So basically, you know, the, the recommended motion is that, is to authorize staff to submit the revised draft business incubator ordinance to both the County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission if the board is still interested in pursuing this.
John, I have a neighbor couple of questions. Is this, this was great, this presentation you put together. I mean, how you explain, so it has to be... The, I take it that this was put together without the input of the Planning Commission, which is why this is going back to the Planning Commission as well as the Chester County Planning Commission? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. And so, you know, the, the exact language, you know, the commas and, you know, everything has to be exactly the same to what the Planning Commission proves and what goes through the County Planning Commission. So that's why we're, it's sort of iteration number two.
Are you gonna make a question?
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to ask. On the first item on the Planning Commission's recommendation, if a business incubator is proposed with only uses permitted by right, then the business incubator, incubator itself should be permitted by right rather than by conditional use. On the face of it, that seems reasonable if it's by right, unless we were going to be, we're gonna be setting up a separate procedure for this with conditional use, the cost of it associated with it. Is there a value in, in, in us having a conditional use with each of these incubator uses?
Well, it, it's, it's a conditional use with the original application to be a business incubator. So in your application, what we're proposing is that, you know, you say for software development, for light industry, for this, that, and the other thing. And that creates a template. I think the concern is if we don't require conditional use off the bat, and there's no question, conditional use is a, is a, you know, a barrier to entry, because it requires hiring attorneys, hiring engineers, or whatever. I think the concern from an administrative standpoint was, one of the ways that this works is anytime, you know, software company XYZ moves out and software company ABC moves in, there's a use and occupancy permit, okay? If we don't have some sort of, if this applicant hasn't gone through the conditional use process and isn't kind of aware of what the procedure is, it would be very easy for them to skip over those UNO permits. It would be very hard as a matter of practice to kind of police the, you know, those different tenants that come in to make sure they're still conforming with, with the byright uses. So that's the gist of it. I think there's also, there's also, I mean, this is, I don't think is, is prominent a salient concern, but it's, right now, the zoning ordinance does allow in those business parks by conditional use, it allows you to have multiple uses in a multi-use building, provided that the, the space, the use occupies no less than 5,000 square feet. It would be kind of strange to have that as a conditional use and then not have, but then allow incubators by right. That would be an inherent contradiction there. So I think those two issues were, one, staff was...
Okay, and this first one has got, what got my attention is if we're promoting incubator uses, I, I, I don't wanna create more barriers than are necessary to promote that kind of, you know, new economy type of business activity. And in that context, the number four, verify the accuracy, from this, from the County Planning Commission, verify the accuracy of the proposed definition of light industry. Excuse me, excuse me, that's not the one. Number three, verify the accuracy of the language in section as currently written that has to do with, "It may discourage flexibility in providing for the parking needs of business incubator tenant." And the staff writes, "No change warranted. Maintain the existing parking requirements is important to avoid overcrowding." And again, I'm just wondering about flexibility in, in the standards for parking, depending on the use, that we, we don't box ourselves in, and either that is gonna require variance proceeding or something of that nature. It just seemed, it just seemed a little rigid. And again, the new economy, trying to be flexible, but it doesn't sound like we're being flexible. That's my, my only comment. And that's from 40,000 feet. I haven't really studied this.
John, I'd ask the question this way. I, I share Mike's concern. If the facility had a requirement of parking based on what it was, and one of the main portion of their buildings into an incubator, and perchance the incubator component added enough parking requirements to what, to what will then be the parking requirements for the base business, is possible that the sum of it to was greater than what was allotted to the original single person? So what do you, what do you do if, in fact, through the incubation, the parking requirements are increased?
The, the applicant would have to demonstrate that the use he's gonna put in incubator could comply with the parking requirements.
Well, the point being, if the use does add, at the end of the day, to the parking requirements, they have to, they have to deal with it.
Then they have to be a variance or that we recommend all the process.
They would have to demonstrate that the use they're gonna put in the incubator, or whatever they commit through the door for the, with that application, for that specifically incubator use, that they have adequate parking.
I'm trying to read into what the Chester County Planning Commission is trying to get to, but it seems to me they're getting to the fact that if something changes from the base requirements that the building had at the beginning, that there's enough flexibility to deal with that, whether it's less or more. It doesn't say whether it's less or more, but you could have, or you could have less.
I think, you know, the, the current square-footed parking requirement, you know, we're talking about the T&amp;D overlay, we're talking about parking flexibility and shared parking. You know, the great example is the Home Depot that has that parking lot that's no car ever parked in, but it was required to have those spaces because it's where everybody store, which is wasteful. And it seems like the concept of an incubator would be shared parking. So I'm, I think it needs to somehow accommodate flexible parking.
Now, Home Depot does accommodate Asponts. But, and in that context, we're, again, parking, parking regulations here are in our zoning ordinance. And I've, I've, I've most recently brought up the issue of number of units on a single-family driveway or a single-family access road to a subdivision. That's tied into our zoning ordinance. Whereas if we had provisions like this in our subdivision, the board would, in concert with the Planning Commission, would have more flexibility to consider design, progressive design, being able to waive the requirements or modify them. When they're in the zoning, we're automatically locked into the, to the zoning hearing board, and proving a hardship is not a question of economics.
Let me, let me jump in here, wait, let me jump in here. I mean, I think there's a larger issue that both you and the planning, the County Planning Commission are getting at, which is off-road parking requirements in general. But I don't know that, and, and so if we choose to look at that and revise that, which is obviously, you know, your prerogative, or our prerogative, you know, we should do that. obviously, you know, your prerogative, our prerogative, you know, we should do that. What this, the language in the draft ordinance says that basically, a business incubator is going to be treated like any other business when it comes to off-street parking requirements. So, you know, if you were to, if we were to go back and change the underlying parking requirements, all of this would be dealt with. You know, but I also think it's important to note that, yeah, we think about incubators as being, allowing for flexibility here and there and creating startups and economies of scale or whatever, but they're still human beings, they're going to drive cars to get to work, the same way as that they work in Johnson and Johnson or CTDI, so.
But here's an example. An incubator is going to be sharing space, and maybe you'll help me with this, it's going to be sharing space with an existing use. The existing use comes in and testifies, if you will, that based upon their usage and what they know, the incubator could be very easily accommodated here without having to put more parking spaces in. If, if we're tied into the zoning ordinance with that, we have an ability to change that or consider that modification, it's got to go to the zoning hearing board. Is that, is that a reasonable scenario that could come up? You're grimacing, grimace at me with some information.
So, we have, we have, we have a building in a corporate park, it has a use in it, and the building has excess space. So, under the current ordinance, current use, he has that X number of parking spaces. Whatever he has, so that's a given, and now let's say he has 5,000 square feet extra space he wants to make, create into incubators, incubator. Depending on how many parking spaces, it's going to turn to what uses he can put in there. If he has 5,000 square feet of excess space and he only has 20 excess parking spaces, he can't put an incubator business in there that's going to employ 100 people. Because he doesn't have the parking, so he would have to go back and find some other use that would comply with his parking requirements. And we need to keep in mind is how we, one of the problems we have had in East Ocean in the past is that a company comes in, and QVC is the best, a very good example. QVC came in as a warehouse with half a dozen employees and a couple of trucks, and everybody, American Hospital, and they had a giant building with no, very little parking. The building got sold to QVC who all of a sudden put a whole lot of people in small boxes to do their business, and they had a parking problem. And so, then we amended the parking ordinance, we changed the requirements so that people could park in their front yards, we increased the purpose coverage. So, again, I think what we're trying to say is, if you have space and want to do, and want to open an incubator business, your parking is going to control what uses you go in there.
And you don't get, I guess, you don't get a pass, so to speak, because it's an incubator. Yeah. I, I can appreciate that perspective.
Yeah, my interest is not increasing purpose surfaces in our township.
We don't need to, using those that we have.
Yeah, exactly so.
Is there a motion?
Well, the question is, the motion is fine, so have you, has this issue been resolved? I'm not sure if the issue's been resolved, you can't resolve this number three before you start talking about motions.
Well, I mean.
The staff has recommended that we maintain existing parking requirements, and an incubator is treated no different than any other use.
I guess then, in that context, I would like to have consideration to amend the motion, to at least have the planning commission take a closer look at this relative to flexibility to afford the, you know, the best design without an excessive number of parking spaces, understanding the scenario. I just want to make sure that the planning commission focuses in on this because our interest is in promoting these type of uses. I just want to make sure that our regulations are not, are protective of the health, safety, and welfare, our interests and our citizens' interests, but not going to be such a barrier that they'll say, oh, I'm not going to that township, that it's impossible to get through.
Okay, so your, the motion is basically for, to, for the planning, I got, yeah.
John, I'm not sure if it's our planning commission, the Chester County Planning Commission was the one that wrote this, sure. I believe that what we're asking for, what Mike's asking for, is an expansion or rationale of what they wrote. We don't quite see what they wrote, we're asking them to explain further what they mean in terms of the flexibility. I don't think that's really the charge for our planning commission, it's the charge for the Chester County Planning Commission, since they wrote it in the first place.
No, but that, but our planning commission should at least know about.
Well, at least can look at.
But that's a very good point, Marty, that maybe, and the County Planning Commission's been doing a very good job in the recent, recent months, year or two, on their reviews, they're doing much more detail, and perhaps they would take some more effort to expand upon it.
As a matter of fact, I would dare say, we're actually giving them credit for pointing this out, it just needs that the board is, as though we need a little bit more detail in what they're talking about.
Okay, excellent.
So, we'll go back to the county.
Right.
Okay.
Next, we're going to consider a recommendation on fugitive dust testing.
Okay, the. Whose day, is they in the room? Is the day in the room, the day must be in the room.
The request is made, been made to, to look at monitoring fugitive dust at horizontal directional drilling sites. Residents have had experience with dust accumulating airborne and on their decks and sightings and so on, so we went to Penone and asked them if they have the capability, the engineering firm, the capability to measure fugitive dust. They've given us a proposal to do that, so I'm going to make a motion and then we can have discussion. The motion's a little long, sorry, I got worried. I move that we approve engaging Penone per the terms and conditions of their proposal to monitor one pipeline horizontal directional drilling site that would be determined by the East Ocean Township staff and Penone engineers as the most effective to measure fugitive dust during drilling. And if the reading exceeds the parts per million as codified in the relevant regulations, that we approve the expense to determine the contents of that fugitive material.
I would second that motion.
David, is it effective or affected? Is it effective or affected where you say that?
The most affected area, so.
AFF.
Yeah, AFF.
AFF.
Impacted area.
We want to.
Why don't you change it?
The record.
It's impacted.
Yeah, okay, the most impacted.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Like second? Okay, any other discussion here?
Bill, you understand this?
We have public comment on it?
Yeah, first, first we have board comment and then we have public comment.
Yeah.
Anything else on the board?
No, it's not the public comments, the comment associated with this particular motion.
Yep. Well, if you have any comment, please come up and give your name and address.
Just for everybody's verification, when we make a motion here, we have to give the board a right to make comments as well as anybody in the audience. A public comment period is for something that's not on the agenda.
Okay, understood. Bill Wagman, 629 North Speakman Lane in West Chester, PA. I live in the Bowtree neighborhood. First of all, I appreciate your second in motion because I think this is very important. I'm the co-chair for the Pipeline Safety Task Force for the Township. We've had numerous discussions about a lot of things. I've been bringing up fugitive dust and air quality since 4/18 of 18.
Been a year.
And I have 21 communications documented between Sunoco, energy transfer, different political parties, BUP, the PEC, the PUC, the DEP. I've had two DEP inspectors in my backyard last year on 7/3 July 3 of last year that inspected, and I have photographs and video of the whole thing. So, I appreciate consideration with this, and my consideration isn't just about my own home, although I'm the closest home in the Bowtree development of 350-plus houses to the drilling rig that will start up again sometime at Boot Road and Route 352. This whole issue on fugitive dust air quality was brought up by a gentleman from Hershey Mills about five months before I brought it up because of the impact on Hershey Mills, and part of my concern is what is in this? So, to David's point, if we can approve this and have them do some type of taste, testing on fugitive dust, if it doesn't meet within the levels or with the township parts per million as regulated, then we test for what's in it. Because my concern is betonite, the materials, Dave, she got betonite, which I sent to the DEP, and the PUC clearly states that this, if inhaled, can be a cancer-causing agent, if it's airborne, if it's not handled properly. And depending on who you talk to, it's a low-class cancer-causing agent, high-class. Bottom line, we need to know what the residents of this township are breathing in, and we have five to six HDD sites in this township, whether the town, whether you pick the location to Boot Road or not, it really doesn't matter. I think we just need to get the ball started on this. The DEP called me personally about two and a half weeks ago, and the gentleman that I spoke to who was the agent in my yard the year prior said, there's nothing they can do, we don't monitor air quality. They are driving the area currently for fugitive dust to see if they see fugitive dust, and I explained three times, that wouldn't do you any good on a site because they haven't been drilling in a year. So, the concern is right now at this point, I had my final question to him, and I wrote it down on a piece of cardboard because that's all I had available to write it with on the time, that he called, I said, if you are not the agency that oversees fugitive dust or air quality in the state of Pennsylvania, who is? And his clear response was, I don't know, from the Department of Environmental Protection. So, I'll leave it at that, thank you for your time, and hopefully we can get moving along with it.
Thank you so much. Clearly, the health and safety of our residents is of utmost concern, and we'll follow through with this and see what we can do.
Let me ask Ricky. Ricky, I think you probably have the best grasp right at the moment of where we expect the drill sites to be in East Ocean, and I think it's less than what was originally going to be in East Ocean back in the original days. You might want to just share that so everybody knows.
The, this, well, we have the one in Quaker, the one at New Kent, the one at the Bowtree entrance, and that'll be a three.
Which is either three or, two or three less than what we had before.
And just, I think everybody probably knows, but the one that's now operating right next to the Ocean Firehouse is, there are actually two going in different directions of the Ocean Firehouse, joining contiguous lot, that is West Ocean Township.
That, that's, that one that Mike talks about, because there's been a lot of conversations about this one. Originally, there was a, there was a drill at Wellington that was going to drill up to that site. They have now changed their mind and are drilling from behind the firehouse down to Wellington. And I would assume that that means they're going to pull from Wellington when the time's appropriate, as opposed to the other way around, which is the original way they're going to do it. And I must tell you, that's a, that's a long way. That pulls a lot, well, choice is a long way, and you already go through to smooth it around, plus the fact when they drill. Now, one of the things that concerns me, and I have very clearly mentioned this to them back at the beginning, when even got started, that if they wanted to work 24/7, which they like to do when they pull, they need to come to the township at that point in time, not waiting till they start doing the work, which is what they have done. We committed to the residents, all them that were here, that if in fact that's what they were going to do, then we would have a meeting, probably at the school because it would be that many people there, and let them make a presentation of why that's necessary. We would have to have somebody there as an expert, so to speak, that would agree or disagree with that, and we would give the residents an opportunity to say what they want to say, which probably, to nobody's surprise, we probably don't let them do it. Now, what we don't know, they have never asked, and they're not at the pulling stage yet, so the point of matter, I don't know what they're going to do. But there is a meeting this week where a couple of us are going to be there, that I've already notified at least the person that's arranging the meeting, that at least we, meaning East Ocean, needs to know if they're going to abide by our ordinance, the working hours of our ordinance, as opposed to just all of a sudden deciding they're going to do 24/7, which means that we would have to cite them, similar to what we did for the noise ordinance last, last year, and they can avoid that, but at least doing what they're supposed to do. I don't know what they're going to do, but we, I need to ask that question because it's been bothering me ever since, because if I was in Bowtree or the apartments or Quaker or someplace that's sitting near a drill, I don't think I'd want that drill working 24/7. Even though the case can be made, it's better for them and it gets the job done faster. That's true, however, you also have to sleep, and it's going to be summertime, and some people will sleep with the windows open. So, I don't know what, what the answer's going to be, I just know it's a potential problem that we should know, since we're going to be there, as to what their plans are, and they should be free to tell us that because I would think that they would have to know that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. More comments? Is this on the, the motion that's on the floor?
Kind of a piggyback to what Marty just said.
What?
We need to talk about the motion.
We need to talk about the motion.
Now, it has to do with 24 drilling, let's hold off on that, like, so it has to do with the motion.
We can have that on our second public comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor regarding dust test, fugitive dust testing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next, we have a recommendation for mower replacement. Two mower replacements. We're scheduled to replace two radius mowers. Both mowers are fully depreciated, and we have budgeted $18,000 to replace the mowers. Rick or John, do you want to talk about the?
They went to two CoStar vendors, which are licensed, approved by the state. Conway Power comes in at $16,119.40. Power Pro Equipment comes in at $18,898.80. Mark recommends we go to, go with Conway Power.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Discussion from the floor?
What, what they've, what they've effectively said is, in our, in our capital improvement program, the two mowers that we're replacing have been fully depreciated, meaning that we have the money available to purchase them, which is the purpose of what we do in the capital program anyway. So, just before anybody wonders where we're getting the money to pay for this, it's out of the capital program.
And it's coming in less than budget.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, now we have, we're up to more additional public comment. Well, one other matter, I'm sorry.
I'm not going to grant.
Sorry.
What's this?
We have one other matter. Okay, we have a con, we have, for the Paoli Pike Trail Development, Segment F and G contract dated April 21, 2016, is coming out, needs to have its termination date extended. So, we're going to extend the contract termination date through October 21, 2019. Anything else?
I'd make that motion to, for the township to, we're requesting an extension, that's what we're doing essentially, through October 21.
The county will give it to us, yes, the county just want to give it to us if the board asks.
Okay, well, we'd like to ask for that extension, and that would be my motion, I'll leave the staff to put it in proper order.
Second?
John or Rick, do we know that, that they will be done date certain?
Well, if we get the permit, it's just a matter, at this point, we're half and G, it's just a matter of getting the permit.
Right, and DB, they will give us another six months extension.
Or they would prefer us to do it this way rather than all at once?
Right, they, one six-month extension.
Okay, any com, any additional comments from the board, from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Next, we're up to public comments.
It's been a while. I never saw a microphone. So, like, it's a little, 611 South Speakman Lane. Two things, one is.
One is, uh, to Marty's point, and I don't know how feasible or logical or, or right this would be, but with, one of the things I learned from attending a meeting with Representative Cametta and several other elected officials up in Euclid a week or two ago, Ron and Bill and Judy and I were there, is the idea that the more people who get involved and the, and the more, um, when you notate things aren't quite right, they have a tendency to start to steamroll. And, and so, to your point, and I remember the first couple of times I came here, you had made it very clear that, no, they have to, if Sunoco wants to do 24/7, clearly, the, the idea of transparency is Russian to them. They don't see, they don't speak, they don't, it's just not going to happen. A suggestion would be to perhaps have Rick or the board put a letter together to the DA, the district attorney here in Chester County, raising a hand saying, we have a little bit of concern because we haven't heard from Sunoco, we had asked them in the past, and we just don't know if they're just going to automatically start drilling 24/7 in our community. We'd like to hereby go on record as saying, we, we'd like you to know that this is a possibility.
We can do that, however, I would rather, since the meeting's Thursday, I would rather ask the question.
Okay.
They may give the answer, as opposed to creating a little bit of chaos. The reason I say that is, it took a little bit of effort to get us back into being able to attend these meetings because of the fact that we filed petitions to support some of these, some of these other petitions. As long as they're allowing us to do that, it's a legitimate question. And we're not messing around with the, the legal side of this.
Right.
And it, it could come to pass that they dodge the issue. Then it's going to be up to the board to decide to do something else. And we may have to do that or whatever. I, I don't, I'm not sure what, personally, I'm not sure. I know what Hogan's going to do, or what he says he's going to do.
Yes.
I don't know what becomes his jurisdiction versus somebody else's jurisdiction. But the simple fact of the matter is, at this stage of the game, since it appears to me that they're trying to get, they're trying to get moving on this thing and get it done. We argued as to whether or not the 20, the 2020 December was a good date. From what I can see, it appears as they, they want to get out of here. Because the frank of the matter, the truth of the matter is, in my opinion, they're starting to get a lot of blowback all over the place, and they don't want to get stuck. And I, I don't know if they would or they wouldn't, but that's not the point. The point is, I think now is the time for us and them, us to be prepared and for them to answer the question. And if we don't get an answer, then I think we're going to have to do something about it. Because it's only fair to the people. We committed to the people to do it a certain way, and whether Sunoco likes it or not, they're going to have to do it that way. Now, I would be remiss not to say, this is like the noise ordinance, we don't know if we have the authority to do it because they, while they appealed it, they, they removed the appeal, they pulled back the appeal. So it never went to the Commonwealth Court. And I can tell you, the PUC doesn't know if we have the authority either, or they have the authority. It's one of those where preemption doesn't prevail. So this is kind of like a test case, and, and for all I know, they may want to test. And, but the point of the matter is, I just want to be very clear, since I've mentioned to them several times, that they, they hear one more time what the executive matters and chance for partner. And if they don't know what the answer is, they should find out the answer.
We're probably singing from the same hymnal. It's now you have Hogan, who is clearly on the side of making sure things are done right. And we're not saying pull the pipes out of the ground. Alls we're saying is, do it right. Take care of the folks in Bowtree, who are going to be up for the next 200 days, with however long this is going to be. And if, if a letter to him or a phone call to him is, is, isn't out of the question, I think there's great value in that. That's all I'm saying. So we agree on that. The other thing I, I also wanted to ask, and maybe Rick can help on this. So I have a temporary easement that expired on March 9th, personally, me, 611 South Speakman Lane. But there's a little fine print in there that says, three years from the signature or when the work starts. And, and no one seems to know when it started in Bowtree. Do you know?
You should talk to a lawyer.
Yes, I agree.
You should talk to a lawyer.
Okay. Because I can't get Sunoco to tell me when they started.
Experienced in pipeline, easements, and eminent domain. Yeah, in other words, you need to find somebody that's experienced in these matters. Pipeline, not pipeline, easement matters. Not just, not just for, yeah.
So there, there was no documented evidence of when they started drilling in, in Bowtree? That, that's the, that's what I heard. Well, we're not exactly sure when we started. We think it was the spring of 2017. Seems kind of goofy that no one knew.
They know exactly when it started.
And you're not the only person asking the question, but people are seeking legal counsel.
Okay, that's fair. And I thought maybe you guys might have recorded that, so, but I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Brian Coco, 633 North Speakman Lane, West Chester. This question is for Rick. Based on the earlier discussion on, on dust, based on some discussion that they may be doing extending hours, Rick, are you aware of what they're going to do? They've got New Kent, obviously they settled, and, and they're going to start drilling there at some point in the future. My question is, good news, it seems that they're taking much more care in, in barriers this time than they did the last time. And I would certainly hope that when they start drilling in New Kent, if you recall, when they drilled the last time, there was no barrier to the outside, which really affects us in the neighborhood. They protected New Kent, which God knows are 10 feet from, from the drilling site. But, you know, based on the noise, based on the dust, I, I would at least hope that they're going to put a barrier similar that they have at the other end of Bowtree, that they have at, at Matlock Forest. Do, do you know what their plan is barrier-wise? Because they took everything down when they stopped drilling.
We communicated with Sunoco that dust is a concern at the New Kent drilling site.
Okay, so do you, are you assuming that they're going to quit the same?
We told them that dust was a concern at the New Kent drilling site, and told them that, I, everyone, I mean, was in the minutes that we were going to take steps to measure it, so they should be forewarned of and do what they need to do.
Okay.
So I don't know what they're going to do, but we let them know that we will be doing testing, and, but again, they're, I'm not sure exactly when they're going to mobilize the New Kent site. They only have so many drills that much.
Okay, do you know specifically when they're going to start at New Kent?
No, no, they, they, like I said, they, I, they, maybe sometime this month, but they weren't sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
What's the penalty if Sunoco decides to go 24/7 without approval from the township?
It's like a fine above, if they're found, if they're found guilty, it's a fine above the $600, like a thousand dollars per, per offense. And each day could be a separate offense.
So in, in the scope of this project, that's a very small fine?
Yes, yes.
So our leverage isn't very good?
They elected to pay the penalty associated with the noise violation, it was $6,000.
The township, the, the state legislature establishes how much the township can, what they do in orders, what the fines can be. It's, it's not, we just can't pick a number. The state legislature spells out the amount of the fine, not us.
But in the scope of this five-plus billion-dollar project?
Yes, it is, yes. Yes, we agree, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any? Okay?
Brian Sweet, 646 Metta Drive. Marty, I think it's been twice now they should be brought up to 24/7 drilling, which I appreciate making us all aware of it. Both times I've gotten the impression, though, that you're willing to kind of entertain it or talk about it. And I just want to make sure that you feel that immediately the board will take action to stop, to, to stop that happening.
I'm going to ask, I don't know what the answer's going to be.
Yeah, but it should be like, no, we're not going to allow that, period, even if it's going to get them out of here quick, but can't make it anyways.
I don't know what the board's going to do, I know what I would, I would remind them of the conversations that we had about what we planned to do, or what their obligation is. I give the benefit of the doubt to at least Hershey. I mean, you have an opportunity to answer a question. I, I don't have any idea. I would hope that they are learned something over a period of time, and that they be a little bit more responsible than they've been in the past. Now, is that true? I don't know.
Rick?
I'm going to find out.
Brian, the concern is, there, I would say, at Quaker Drive, they're going to be drilling down towards the executive center for some number of days. And the concern is that once they start pulling that pipe back, they prefer to do it in continuous operation. In other words, pull 300, 400 feet in, roll the next one over, fix it well together, pull it out 400 feet over. The concern is if something happens and the hole collapses, and basically, that's 200 days that they already drilled, they now have to start, move the drill over five feet and start up again. And the concern is that, while for most people, it's probably not an issue, but that poor guy who just suffered through 200 days, and I've been in Mr. Batista's house, has now to suffer for another 200 days of going through that aggravation. And that's the concern. As opposed to, you know, they pull it and he loses, and, you know, he loses some period of time over some period of time. That is a tough question.
And all of these, all of these are related, and they, and the issue is, the noise, the dust, hours of operation are all tests whether we are preempted by the state or not. And, you know, I share your concern, and, you know, I, I think I was the person who encouraged the township to cite them on the noise ordinance violations. Unfortunately, we never got the chance to, to take that to the appeals, to find out whether we're preempted or not. So all of these are related. So who knows? One of them might take us there. We'll find out.
I have a question. It's just a little bit peripheral, but directly related. Drilling, and I'm just kind of going to you, Rick, because I know you're, you're very familiar with, with a lot, an awful lot, including some of the technical aspects. When they're drilling the bore hole, the HDD, the, the drills are, are working a particular way, I'm, I'm guessing, to drill the hole. When they are pulling the pipe in, they're not boring, but they're pulling, is there a different response to the immediate environment, by way of either dust or noise from the machinery, et cetera, because they're pulling rather than grinding through?
Just, just typically when they're drilling, the machine runs at a constant speed from, when they start drilling until, just at the end of the day. Once the bore is, and, and that's the first bore, then they got to ream it out to the appropriate size, okay. Now they're going to pull the plate back. So there, there's a section of rod, and I guess it's 40 feet long or whatever, so they're ready to pull. They rev the machine up, it pulls that new plate for the 40 feet. They slow the machine down, then take out that section of rod, reconnect it, and then pull another 40 feet. So the difference is during the drilling operation, the machine is running constantly at a relatively high noise continuously. During the pull, during the pulling operation, the noise would cycle up and down because obviously when they're, when they pull and remove that section of rod, that, that doesn't need, that the machine doesn't need to be running that damn.
Just curiosity question, and it may have some relevance later on. Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, we have some correspondence.
Mr. Mayor Chairman, we have three notices. The first one, the township has a bridge over to Ridley Creek that put a trail down at Applebrook, and we need to replace it. So we've applied for a general permit, 11, to replace the, that bridge. The second one is, Adelphia has applied for a general permit for the work associated with the pipeline. And as you know, in East Goshen Township, that work assists a, a little bit of work around that valve site up there off the Paley Pike.
And has that passed through FERC yet?
No.
Okay. They still have, have to get their permit?
Yeah. It's just, just one of several permits, somebody, anybody has to get, do anything anymore. And last but not least, is we're applying for another DEP general permit seven for the emergency, the emergent, excuse me, Cornwallis Drive Emergency Access Road.
If you haven't been here in the past, Cornwallis Drive is an old road that was built about when?
Back in the 40s.
In the 40s, before our zoning took, took, it was in place. And it had reasonably, it had lots that were big enough that they can get subdivided. So the number of homes on that street has increased significantly, and there was only one exit onto 352. We were concerned that if there were an accident or an emergency vehicle had to get through if there were a fire or something, that people could get trapped and unable to get out in and out of the development. So over a period of what, a year or more?
Or more.
Or more. We've been negotiating with Hershey's Mill Village to get an emergency access into Hershey's Mill. It will not be open under normal circumstances, but if there were an emergency, vehicles could be able to get out and, and safely. And so that's what the, this permit is for.
Rick, I got a question for you. When it's up to that one, this permit's required because there's water involved, water crossings involved?
Yes, yeah, they, yes, they're both water, yeah, stream crossings, yes.
Now, the one for Adelphia is a general permit to do certain things. Is that permit, can FERC issue that permit, or whoever issues the permit, DEP or whoever?
DEP.
Prior to the, the, whatever it was that we're looking at, the integrity plan, or whatever it was?
I, I'm not aware whether, I, I don't know if DEP's approval would be contingent upon them getting FERC approval. But they have, but they would have to get everything before they could do anything.
Okay, so it's possible, it's possible that DEP decision is independent of anything going on?
Right, but they can't do anything until they get the FERC approval and DEP approval. They have to have all their approval.
What, what happened to all the, all those that responded to the request for the?
Well, the, the comment period was extended, and then at some point, FERC will have to generate some finding or report on what they're going to do. So that's what we're waiting on.
So the comment period's closed, the FERC was evaluating. Is that what they're doing?
Well, I, it was extended, so.
Apparently, they'll be a decision this week.
Okay, good. Good, we'll see what happens.
All right, any other comments here from the board?
I, I want to go back to correspondent A, and I'm going to plead ignorance. The bridge replacement.
We have, we have, we have the bridge on the trail.
Yeah, well, and I know what, I know it.
And it crosses presently.
Right, right.
And so what happened is last fall, somebody was walking on it and noticed it was rather soft. So we went down and investigated, and yes, it was soft, and we pulled the decking off, and these two I-beams underneath were, one of the I-beams was shot. So we then contacted Penoni, and we buy that we need to get a permit.
Do we have an, an estimate at this point of what the repairs are going to cost?
Well, the repairs are four pieces of steel I-beam, which are, you know, three or four hours apiece and some, two buys. So to repair, we're going to spend more money getting the permit than we are going to be doing a repair. Unfortunately, we're not even touching the water, but again, it's, yeah.
Yeah, okay. It was, so it was relatively recent, that was.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Second? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, people.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, John. Thanks, Rick.
You know, Tom? What's happening?
Hey, John, Janet, appreciate you streaming. You're the only one who went tonight.
That was the only one?
Yes.